Good morning and welcome to the New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Aging. At this time, please silence all electronics. If you wish to submit a testimony, you may do so at testimony@council.nyc.gov. Just a friendly reminder, do not approach today as at any moment. And if you need assistance, you may ask one of the Sergeant-at-Arms. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Thank you so much and good morning. Welcome to today's Committee on Aging hearing. I'm Councilmember Crystal Hudson, Chair of the Committee on Aging, and my pronouns are she/her. Older adults are driving most of the population growth in New York State. In New York City, the population of residents aged 65 years and older increased by 36% over the past decade and currently accounts for 16.2% of the city's population. By 2040, the New York City Department for the Aging, also known as NYC Aging, projects the population of older adults to reach 1.86 million, or 20.6% of the city's population. Over the past decade, according to the Center for an Urban Future, New York City's older adult population has become more diverse than ever. Across the five boroughs, the older immigrant population increased by 49%. Meanwhile, the number of Black, Hispanic, and Asian older adults has outpaced the older white population. Moreover, as the city's older adult population has grown, so has the number of older adults living in poverty. It is therefore incumbent on the city to ensure that our growing diverse older adult population, which is more likely to be low-income, rent-burdened, and living on a fixed income than other New Yorkers, is afforded the opportunity to age in place. Today, to that end, we're going to hear two introductions and one resolution. Introduction number 896, sponsored by Councilmember Lynn Schulman, would require NYC Aging, in collaboration with the New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development, or HPD, to submit an annual report on how many older adults live in apartment buildings in each council district and how many of those apartments are retrofitted for people with disabilities. Introduction number 985, sponsored by Councilmember Eric Dinowitz, would require HPD, in collaboration with the New York City Department of Finance, or DOF, to provide pre-populated senior citizen rent increase, or SCRI, application forms to eligible New Yorkers living in city-supervised Mitchell Lama housing. Lastly, we'll hear my resolution, resolution number 757, which calls on the Federal Communication Commission, or FCC, management agency, to add alerts for missing persons with dementia to the wireless emergency alert system. The Alzheimer's Association reports that six in 10 persons living with dementia will wander at least once, and many will do so repeatedly, and up to 50% of those who wander risk serious injury or death if not found within 24 hours. My mother happened to be one of those so people. Unlike New York City's Silver Alert System and the state's Missing Vulnerable Adults Program, which send notifications only to enrolled mobile devices, alerts sent through the federal wireless emergency alert system are sent directly to all compatible mobile devices located in the targeted geographic area, even if the mobile device has not enrolled or subscribed to receive such alerts. The more people notified, the better chance we have at saving more lives and bringing our loved ones living with dementia home. Thank you to my colleagues and Aging Committee members, Councilmembers Schulman and Dinowitz, for introducing these bills, which could go a long way in allowing older New Yorkers to maintain independent, safe, and comfortable lives and age in place. The Committee is looking forward to receiving testimony on this legislation. I'd also like to thank my staff, Casey Addison and Andrew Wright, and Aging Committee staff, Christopher Pepe, Chloe Rivera, and Sami Alhamid. I'd like to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Schulman at this time, and I'll now turn it over to the Committee Council to administer the oath.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everyone. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, and the whole truth, and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions?
I do.
You may begin. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Hudson and members of the Committee on Aging. I am Jocelyn Grodin, Associate Commissioner for the Bureau of Social Services and Active Aging at the New York City Department for the Aging, New York City Aging. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify today regarding these introductions. For the purpose of my brief testimony, I will keep my remarks solely to introduction 896, which pertains to New York City Aging. While New York City Aging does not construct housing for older adults nor placement of older adults in affordable housing units, we do work closely with our partners at New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development, HPD, and New York City Human Resource Administration, HRA, to address the housing needs of older New Yorkers. In particular, our recent work through the Cabinet for Older New Yorkers, of which HPD and HRA are members, have deepened this relationship and assisted us in addressing older New Yorkers' needs. This partnership is crucial to the ability to develop the broad range of options necessary to satisfy this diverse group. For example, we're currently collaborating with HPD on an upcoming universal design recommendation pursuant to Local Law 30. These are just some examples of our commitment to older adults and accessibility and affordable housing. Regarding intro 896, while we agree with the spirit of transparency in this legislation and feel it is positive to understand where older adults are and in what type of housing, New York City Aging would rely heavily on HPD in order to produce such a report. HPD has the expertise and knowledge of housing types, units, age of residence, physical structures constructed throughout the city. As a social service agency, New York City Aging may not readily access this information, though we are committed to addressing older adult needs and housing. Additionally, it is our understanding that the reporting requirements for this piece of legislation may be partially contained in publicly available sources, which HPD can provide greater insight into as they relate to the housing needs of older New Yorkers. We look forward to continuing a discussion about this bill with the Council in the future. Thank you for your time today and this important discussion. I'm able to address any questions you might have regarding this bill and happy to discuss other items as they might arise.
Thank you.
Do we have additional? Is the testimony written, or do we have additional oral testimony from Finance? Okay, you can proceed. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Hudson and members of the Committee on Aging. My name is Pierre Dejean, and I'm the Assistant Commissioner of the Property Exemptions Administration Division at the Department of Finance. I am joined today by my colleagues, Kieran Mahoney, our External Affairs Outreach Director, and Attorney Robin Lee from the Office of Taxpayer Advocate. And with me is part of my team, Director of the Senior and Disabled Programs, June Champion. The Senior Citizens and Disabled Rent Freeze Program, SCRI and DRI respectively, provide crucial housing affordability assistance to vulnerable New Yorkers. In fiscal year 2023, over 51,000 seniors and over 10,400 disabled New Yorkers received assistance through these programs. To be eligible for the rent freeze program, an applicant's combined household income must be less than $50,000. The applicant must be at least 62 years old for SCRI, or must have a qualifying disability for DRI, and the applicant's rent must be 1/3 or more of their household income. Once the application is approved, the household's rent is frozen at the base year amount, and thereafter, the city credits the landlord for an amount equivalent to rent increases through a property tax exemption. The tenant continues to pay their base rent and must renew their status with the Department of Finance every year or every two years, depending on the tenant's lease and type of housing. The Department of Housing Preservation and Development administers SCRI for tenants in subsidized housing, including Mitchell Lamas, redevelopment company developments, certain federally assisted housing, and housing development fund companies. We share the Council's desire to streamline the rent freeze application process and want to highlight a few areas where we've made great strides to accomplish this. In the 2023 state legislative session, we successfully advocated for a state law that changed the income definition for these programs and the Senior and Disabled Homeowner Exemptions Program. This allows us to align with federal adjusted gross income. The change means that applicants can provide their personal income tax return to verify their income, instead of a binder full of documentation that they would need to provide additional information for the definition of income. Additionally, we expect that the change will broaden the base of eligible New Yorkers by thousands. Additionally, we have continued to strive for better efficiency and more transparency. We have enhanced our Tenant Access Portal, better known as TAP. TAP not only allows an applicant or tenant or their approved representative to track and look up the status of their applications, it also now allows initial and renewal applicants to electronically file their applications. Finally, I'd like to highlight our outreach team's effort to reach potential applicants for these programs. In this calendar year, DOF's Outreach Unit, along with the Office of Taxpayer Advocate, have conducted 68 events, including events with elected officials, community boards, and community-based organizations. Additionally, we work closely with the Mayor's Office of Public Engagement to ensure eligible New Yorkers are aware of these beneficial programs. In the past, we have worked with HPD on SCRI, DRI enrollment, and Mitchell Lama complexes. In fact, June this past year, we joined with State Senator Kavanaugh and Councilmember Marte at Knickerbocker Village for a massive SCRI enrollment event. Supported by HPD and volunteers of legal service, we were able to provide direct onsite assistance to SCRI-eligible Mitchell Lama residents. Furthermore, earlier this year, we provided SCRI training to the Department of Aging staff, as well as their service providers. In addition to my team, the Department of Finance's External Affairs Division and the Office of Taxpayer Advocate, which includes the SCRI-embudspeople, are dedicated to ensuring every New Yorker would benefit from this program and is able to take advantage of it. Regarding intro 985, while we support the spirit of the bill and encourage more New Yorkers to enroll in these programs, we have concerns regarding the provisions of the bill as it's written. We have concerns regarding our ability to predetermine eligibility based on Mitchell Lama income verification, and that we will not be able to pre-populate a form with verified, accurate information that will improve the process for these applicants. Our agency is reviewing the income definitions used on these forms to assess how they may align to the state laws that govern the SCRI program. Our goal, like yours, is to ensure that the application process is as easy as possible and that anyone who is eligible is able to take advantage of this benefit. We look forward to working with the Council and HPD to reach these potential recipients and design outreach efforts in collaboration with community groups and council office. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today. We look forward to your questions.
Thank you so much. I want to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Dinowitz, and I'll turn it over to Councilmember Schulman for a few remarks regarding her bill.
Yes, I'm very proud to have this bill, intro 896. So when we had a hearing some time back, I asked the question about whether or not if there was known how many accessible dwelling units and for people aging in place that we had, and there wasn't an answer. So that's why, you know, that prompted me to come up with this bill. I will tell you, I will admit, I am a senior. And, you know, we want our seniors to age in place, and it's important, you know, especially when we're talking about building more affordable housing, that the housing actually is something that seniors and people with disabilities can live in that's accommodating for them. So very often, it's not. So that's why, if there's a way that we can do this, and, you know, I'll talk later when we do the questions, but I understand that HPD might have it and all of that, but, you know, with the systems that we have now and AI technology and everything else, I'm sure there's a way we can come up with a plan to make sure that people are aware of where these are and how many that we have, so we can figure out how many we need to have going further. Because I have senior housing being built in my district now through HPD. So, but I want to, we need to really have an assessment, especially with the aging population that we have. So with that, I'm very glad to do this, and thank you, Chair, for having the hearing today.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I'd also like to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Lee. I'll just get right into the questions if that's... Of course. No, of course, it's fine. You told me you had questions, not a statement. Councilmember Dinowitz also has a statement about his bill.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for acknowledging me and for having this hearing today, and of course, for hearing my bill. I'm proud to advocate for my bill, intro 985, a bill that will have a direct and meaningful impact on older adults throughout the city. In my district, we have a number of city-run Mitchell Lamas, where in one of my developments, they're seeing a 22% rent increase over three years, and another one, as much as 70% maintenance increase. So this bill requires HPD to provide eligible New Yorkers living in Mitchell Lama apartment buildings with a pre-filled application forms for the Senior Citizen Rent Increase Exemption Program, using information that they already provide to the city on their required income affidavit, which everyone who lives in a Mitchell Lama has to provide to the city. Affordable housing and support for older adults are two causes of significant importance to both myself and people in my district. The SCRI program is crucial to achieving both, but it is not being utilized as much as it could. Our city agencies have access to the information that deems a resident eligible for the program, so why sit around and wait for our older adults to apply when we can take a proactive approach now? It's not right to expect all qualified residents to have knowledge of the Rent Increase Exemption Program or the application process, especially our older adults, and to rely solely on outreach events. An individual may have mobility issues or a lack of internet access, and they might struggle under current standards to submit an application online or in person. We must make a greater effort to understand the needs of our older adult population and support their well-being. No person should be forced out of their home while in retirement due to a lack of affordability. And this bill will bring us one step closer to eliminating this in New York City. I do appreciate that you are reviewing certain aspects of the bill, but I want to be clear, this bill does not require any agency to predetermine eligibility. It simply states that it will fill out as much of the form, of the SCRI form, as it can, using information that the resident is already submitting to the city. I again want to thank Chair Hudson for the opportunity to speak today and encourage all of my colleagues to sign on to the bill, intro 985.
Thank you, Councilmember. So now I'll jump into questions. Does the Department of Finance have an estimate for the number of New Yorkers who may be eligible for SCRI and DRI but have not yet enrolled?
We have an estimate that in 2019, which was the most recent year for which complete data was available, about 135,000 households were eligible for the rent freeze program. Of the estimated eligible population, about 75,000 received the benefits, which is roughly half. The statistics are available in our rent freeze report, which is readily available on our website.
Do you have the breakdown of the 135,000 eligible, how many for SCRI and how many for DRI?
No, I don't have that broken down here, but we can certainly provide that for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
And what information does the department believe can be automatically populated on SCRI applications?
I have my colleague, Robin Lee, will address that question.
Thank you, Councilmember. Chair, sorry. So we are happy to coordinate our staff with council staff to perform a line-by-line review of this SCRI application. More routine, basic data elements are likely better candidates for pre-population. However, a critical mass of the application data, including income information and social security information, are not ideal candidates for pre-population and transmittal. The practice of pre-populating the forms introduces a risk of disseminating inaccurate data to an applicant, and additionally, we still need to evaluate how this pre-populated data is shared and stored.
Okay, so for that sensitive information, like you mentioned, like social security numbers and rent information or income, do you have a means of securing that type of information on these forms?
We'd have to...
I understand that your concern is the actual, like, pre-population of it, but do you actually have access to that information?
I think we'd have to coordinate and assess a little bit further and get back to you.
Okay.
It takes time to review, and then we'd have to coordinate with HPD as well.
Okay. What does the department view as the biggest hurdle for enrolling more older adults or people with disabilities into SCRI and DRI? And does it differ by program? So for example, are there different hurdles for SCRI versus DRI?
Well, basically, for DRI, one would need a qualifying disability to apply for the program. And for SCRI, what's critical for us is not only household income, but their rent history and their lease history. So if I understand your question...
The question is, what's the biggest hurdle that you find for enrolling more older adults or people with disabilities? So you talked about 135,000 eligible folks, but only 75,000 people who are actually enrolled. So that gap there, what's the biggest hurdle for why you find people are not enrolling in these programs?
Basically, with our program, we need to validate all of the information that's given to us for a qualified candidate. So with respect to getting information with regards to rental information and proof of income, that's critical to us. So gathering information for income and for rent are probably two of our biggest challenges.
And how do you actually verify or validate that information?
Well, we ask the applicants to provide either for income their tax returns, or W2 statements, or 1099 statements.
That is part of the application process, or that's a separate validation process after they've submitted the application?
Separate after they've submitted the application.
Okay. Is there a reason why that wouldn't be part of the application process to streamline?
They can submit it at the same time, as they're submitting their application.
Okay. But then there's a separate validation process for the information that's already been submitted?
No, there's not a separate validation. We just need, require proof of the information that's being submitted to us.
Okay, and then applicants or recipients of these programs have to reapply or renew every one to two years, depending on the program?
Right.
If you already have the information, can you just explain why folks would need to reapply every one or two years, assuming their information doesn't change?
Yeah, I mean, we're required by law to have them reapply every year or every two years, depending on the program. For those that are part of the program, we do provide them with notice and an application with their information already pre-populated in those applications, for those that are already part of the program.
Okay, thank you. Does the Department of Finance have best practices for reaching older adults, many of whom have limited tech literacy, and educating them about SCRI? If so, what does the agency currently do to educate these populations?
For that, I'll pass it over to my colleague, Karen.
Sure.
Good morning, Council and Chair. Thank you for that question. So a lot of the things that we do, especially here within the outreach unit and trying to reach the most eligible New Yorkers, is meet them where they are, right? So it's either having paper applications or trying to walk them through doing it online, and that's where we work a lot with council offices, community-based organizations, and older adult centers, where they have a representative in those offices that they already trust, right? And we want to rely on those offices to help fill out the applications with them. So especially within the outreach unit as well, we sit with the person that is, you know, might be eligible, that we want to get all their documents together and submit them on their behalf. So those are some of the things that we try to do in terms of increasing eligibility. And in terms of also, we were talking about the application process as well, in terms of the documents and income documents. One of the things that we do is we, you know, kind of go through a checklist of all the documents that they may need. And ahead of time, if we are working with any of the council offices, we kind of send that list and add that to the flyer so that people can come prepared. It just kind of creates an easier approval process when they have all their documents together.
Thank you. And do you think that intro 985 would help with ensuring that more people can more easily access the application?
Do you want to...
Yeah, okay.
That's you, right?
Yeah. So using HPD, thank you, Chair, for the question. Using HPD income data for the rent freeze program only works if the data is, say, apples to apples. In an ideal world, if the income data HPD possesses is based on the same definition for income that's featured in the state law that governs rent freeze, then a pre-populated application would assist and possibly solve for this problem. However, if the income definition applicable to HPD data varies from the definition of income applicable to the rent freeze program, we run the risk of using inconsistent data and misleading constituents. And so pre-populating a rent freeze application with incorrect data will hurt both constituents and the city. And again, we're still reviewing the process, and we're happy to be a partner.
Thank you. Does the department have any staff assigned to working in person to sign up older adults for SCRI or DRI? And does the department work with DIFTA-contracted entities such as older adult centers or home-delivered meal providers to educate and enroll older adults in these programs? I know you mentioned a little bit of this before.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I know I'm going to sound biased, but I'm going to highlight the great outreach team that we have at the Department of Finance. So we have a team, we work in every corner of the city, and as I mentioned before, right, working with the elected officials, community-based organizations, and the older adult centers. Most recently, I know the mayor had his older adult town hall at the Park Slope Center for the Aging, or for Successful Aging. So on some of those, we're doing a follow-up rent freeze event and encouraging enrollment there. So we actually just did that last week, two weeks ago, with the Mayor's Public Engagement Unit, Taxpayer Advocate, as well as Volunteers of Legal Services as well.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. And then regarding TAP, which was in your testimony, is that portal tested with older adults to determine ease of use? And are there trainings offered? And I suppose that would go for any and all of your digital portals?
Training is offered to use the TAP portal. It is offered to whomever has access to the computer. Can you pitch a question?
Do you test it with older adults? So do you do any sort of, you know, do you bring older adults in or go to an older adult center, for example, and pull up TAP and see how easy it might be for older adults to use it?
We do do that, right? Yeah.
Yeah, yes, we do. So when we are enrolling people, we do try to show the TAP portal to them to see if they are, you know, interested. You know, we understand that not every older adult is going to be comfortable using the internet, right? So we try to assist them with that. But just as recent as October, the TAP portal was expanded to allow renewals in the portal, where it previously didn't have that function. It was just for initial applications. So now that it's for renewals, we're looking to expand the kind of marketing around that program.
Okay, and then when you help folks in, you know, those various locations, are you taking feedback and then making adjustments or updates to the portal to ensure that, you know, where people might have problems or might be tripping up, that those issues are addressed?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll always take feedback.
Okay.
Take feedback on pretty much any step of the process.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Councilmember Schulman for questions first, and then Councilmember Dinowitz.
Thank you very much, Chair. So one question I have is, what is the average cost of retrofitting an apartment to be older adult-friendly? Do you know?
We'll have to get back to you on that and in coordination with feedback from each day.
Okay. So my next question is, maybe you have the answer to this, what kind of upgrades and work are required to make apartments accessible? What kind of upgrades and work are required to make apartments accessible?
It depends on the particulars of the unit and the situation.
Can you give examples?
HPD really would know better than us, and again, I mean, there's a broad range of answers to it.
All right, we'll follow up with them. Beyond the SARAH program, do property owners currently receive any city incentives to convert apartment units into older adult-accessible units?
These are really questions for our colleagues at HPD.
Okay. Here's a DIFTA one. Does DIFTA refer older adults in need of home repairs or older adult-friendly retrofitting services to HPD, or to other organizations that provide such services?
Yes, and within our own contract portfolio, we have a program that addresses some of those home modification needs that support older adults successfully aging in place.
How do older adults find out about that particular program?
They can call 311, they can call Aging Connect, and we'll connect them, you know, we'll work with them to support that linkage.
Is there any way to put something out that that program is available, so that people are aware of it?
Yeah, absolutely. There's our website. We do a lot of community outreach and awareness, whether it's with our older adults at the older adult centers, or with professional colleagues in the community. And then, of course, I'm sure you're aware of our Cabinet for Older New Yorkers, which we're actively sharing this information. So, this is something we continually do across our program portfolio.
Can you provide the council with some details of how the program works and all that? You don't have to do it now, but if you can provide some materials to us, that would be very helpful.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. How does the city help older adults who live in walk-up apartment buildings and otherwise inaccessible housing relocate to accessible housing if retrofitting their current apartment is not feasible?
We work with our partners at HRA and HPD, both directly, as we're working with clients, whether it's in our, through our older adult centers, or our case management programs. And then, again, more broadly, we also, you know, work together on these issues through our Cabinet for Older New Yorkers, to which HRA and HPD are members.
Chair, can I?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, do you have, do you have a number of last year of how many older adults you helped in this fashion that live in walk-up apartments?
We can, we'd be happy to get back to you.
Please, I would like that. And also, again, if there's a way, because even us as council members, if we're given materials, we can share it with people in our district. So, we'd appreciate getting at least samples of that, and then we can circle back. Does housing accessibility play a role in reducing social isolation and feelings of loneliness among older adults, and if so, how?
Of course. I mean, I think there's a couple of different ways to look at that, but number one, older adults need to get out and participate and contribute to their communities, which, you know, looks like a lot of different things. But, you know, one, one way it looks is to get out to the community, go to an older adult center, have a meal, connect with your neighbors, participate in meaningful health and social activities. So, certainly, that's very important. We do, as I'm sure you know, you know, also have ways to address homebound older adults through pushing services into the home. But certainly, just like any of us, we want to be able to get out and participate in our neighborhoods and the city as fully as possible.
Does the city conduct wellness checks on older adults living in apartments on high floors, say, in a fifth-floor walk-up building? Or does the city partner with an organization to do the work? And how many checks were conducted in the past year, and for how many individuals, which you'll probably have to get back to me on, but the other questions you can...
I mean, I wouldn't say that reflects exactly the way we work.
Okay.
So, if a client is known to us, we fund and support a variety of programs, again, older adult centers, case management, and so on, and so on. Then, we're engaged with those clients we know who are at higher risk for social isolation, because, let's say, they have limitations in activities of daily living, and so on. So, in that example, our case management programs would be checking on them regularly, again, depending on what the client wants, their connection to family and other supports. We have programs like friendly visiting, which, you know, connect on a deeper level in a lot of different ways. And similarly, the older adult centers know their constituents, many of whom have been members of the centers for many years. So, they know when somebody is having a difficult time, whether it's a health issue or social isolation, and to increase the frequency of those checks. So, it's...
How do you reach out? You said people who are known to the centers. How do you reach out to people that are not known to the centers? Is there any kind of outreach, per se, or...?
So, our active engagement is really about clients that are active with our variety of programs. More broadly, I think you're asking, you know, what about older adults who are not connected to New York City aging? So, we wouldn't have their phone numbers, or...
Right, but is there any outreach to people that...
Yes, all the time. We're always supporting outreach efforts. One example of that would be our Join Us campaign, which really supported outreach to older adults post the COVID-19 pandemic, to come back to our centers, or to become members of our centers. And we're always reinforcing through every opportunity we have, you know, to continue to bring awareness of our services in the many ways we can support older adults.
My last question is, what support does the administration need from the council to ensure that more apartment units across the city are accessible to a rapidly expanding older adult population? True question.
Let us think about it and connect.
Okay, please.
Thank you for that.
Because we would, obviously, we want to work with you, so please get back to us. Thank you, Chair, for allowing me the extension.
No problem. I'd like to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Mealy, and now I'll go to Councilmember Dinowitz for questions.
Thank you, Chair. First, I want to say that HPD should be here, and it's deeply troubling that they are not. So, I thank all of you for being here. I am providing you with a gift. It is a present that is being handed to you. It is the income affidavit form, along with the SCRI application. And what you'll notice is, we even did it in color. There are highlights, and it's annotated. And I think there are about nine sections on there, things like name, address, apartment number, everyone else living in the household, income, and I'll get to the income in a second, that are also aligned with areas on the SCRI application. You'll notice here on the income affidavit form, which, again, everyone living in a Mitchell Lama is supposed to submit to the city, in a city-run Mitchell Lama, they submit to the city, that they have information about things like number of bedrooms, things like income. And the request you make at the top of your SCRI form is, I'll just read it, because that's easier, is you may qualify for SCRI if you're 62 years or older, live in certain type of housing, in this case, it's Mitchell Lama, and the income of everyone is less than $50,000, and you spend more than a third of your combined household income on rent, all of which, all of that information is available on the income affidavit, a form that people swear to. And in fact, I circled a bullet point for you at the bottom, and it says, "Income information shown on this affidavit is subject to verification by the New York State Department of Taxation and Finance in accordance with provisions of Section 171B of the Tax Law, and further to verification by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development." So, given that statement, and given all the things on here, I'm still interested to hear what the roadblocks are and why this legislation is problematic.
We have concerns, basically, regarding our ability to predetermine the eligibility, like we've talked about before. There are a variety of factors that could impact an applicant's eligibility. Based on the affidavit alone, the city would not be able to predetermine eligibility absent provision of additional information that we may require.
Yeah.
The practice of pre-populating forms introduces the risk that the city will furnish potentially inaccurate data to an applicant, so...
I hear the concerns about predetermining eligibility. And so, that's why I want to be, may I? Thank you. I want to be clear on what this legislation does. It does not predetermine eligibility. And in fact, one of the things the legislation requires is that a letter accompany the form and uses perhaps the same language that you use, that is used on the SCRI application, which is, as I said earlier, you may qualify. And the legislation is not predetermining eligibility. What it's doing is, it's saying, based on information you've sworn to and already submitted to the city, we're going to use that information to make your life a little easier. And just say, if you qualify based on this nice little paragraph that's written on the SCRI form, we're going to send you a pre-populated form, perhaps in the letter, it says with the understanding that you may qualify based on preliminary information. Now, regarding the concern about the data being correct, it's data that is already being provided by the tenant or the shareholder, and it's subject, according to this income affidavit, to verification by the very state, where you have concerns that the definition of income may be different, right? So, I'm, I just, I'm still unclear about what the roadblocks are, because I hear what you're saying about predetermining eligibility. I'm here saying that's not what the bill does. I'm also here saying that there could be a letter, as per the legislation, explaining all of the caveats and concerns that you have to the resident. Perhaps, please check the accuracy of the information we've provided. But fundamentally, we should be making life as easy as possible for our older adults, and as easy as possible to let them know that they qualify for these programs. We have a golden opportunity here of older adults already sending all the information they need. The city has the information. We should be sending that information back to them to make their lives as easy as possible.
Agreed, Councilmember. At this time, we, this has been fairly new for us. We're still examining this legislation, and we want to just have assurances that there's no conflicts and that we can accommodate what the bill is trying to...
It's fine. Friendship comes first.
That we can accommodate what the bill is trying to do. So, we have concerns, and we just would like the opportunity to be able to really take a look at the legislation and to be able to assure that we're in alignment with what the law requires.
Sure, I look forward to continuing this discussion, but also assuring you that some of your concerns are kind of addressed in the legislation, right? The concerns that you brought up in your testimony are not what the bill does. And I think it's important that as we move forward with the conversation about making life easier for older adults, and making the city more affordable for them, that we do have an honest conversation and a conversation based on what we want to do. And I want to make sure, as we move forward in the conversation, we're not looking for ways to not do the legislation. We're looking for ways to do the legislation and, you know, addressing particular areas of concern. But I would love to start from a place of trying to get this done, so that our older adults can comfortably and affordably live in our city and continue to live in our city, particularly in Mitchell Lamas, which are designed to be affordable, but more and more are becoming unaffordable for our older adults due to staggering rent and maintenance increases, as I listed earlier, 22%, 50%, 70%.
I'd like to just take the opportunity to remind council that we, at the Department of Finance, administer the DRI Mitchell Lamas, right? So, we're very happy to work in collaboration with HPD in order to assure that our processes align and that we can meet the requirements of what this bill is attempting to do.
I thank you, and I will end with what I began with. HPD should be here to address our concerns as it relates to housing. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'd like to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Marte, and I'll turn it over to Councilmember Lee for questions.
Hello. Just had a few questions, which actually, you addressed a lot of them, Councilmember Dinowitz. Always good to be here with DIFTA, as well DOF. Hey, Karen. And I just wanted to know, because I know, I know, obviously, that, you know, very familiar with DIFTA, obviously, it's having run senior centers and Meals on Wheels programs, and love all the work that you guys are doing. And I know it's challenging, given the staffing and budget restraints, constraints, I should say. So, because I think one thing that we learned during COVID was how this whole government approach can be beneficial in dealing with specific demographics and issues that we're trying to face. And so, I know that the Cabinet for Older New Yorkers is accomplishing some of that. And just out of curiosity, just wanted to hear from you on your thoughts of, you know, I know that a lot of the data does lie with HPD, as you're saying, for this bill, but from your perspective, what would that look like in terms of how we could get that data more effectively? Because if, even if it does lie with HPD, how do you sort of see that coordination happening between DIFTA and HPD in order to better serve the older adults and get that information? And if it does sort of lie with them, do you see them as being the overseers and you guys providing support? Or how would you sort of imagine that looking like to better that information?
Our goal is always to connect older adults with the services and supports that they need, which you're very aware of. Even if those services are at a partner agency, in terms of what data we collect in this space, it's pretty limited. We do collect some voluntary information about do older adults live alone, are they in a co-op or a condo, and so on. However, we would ultimately rely on HPD for, you know, more specific data regarding their role constructing, managing, and monitoring New York City housing stock. As you're aware, Councilwoman, our role is to provide the social service supports around that, and of course, you know, we would continue to do that, and we work very closely with HPD and HRA as part of our Cabinet for Older New Yorkers. And HPD has certainly been an integral part of addressing the needs of housing for older New Yorkers, and we are working with them, you know, more broadly, to look about how to support accessibility issues. And again, our role is really as the social service on today.
Okay. And, sorry, if I may, Chair, just a couple more questions. This is more related to, because we had a similar hearing yesterday with DYCD, DOE, as well as MOPED, the Mayor's Office of People with Disabilities. And just out of curiosity, because I know that MOPED is a teeny-tiny agency that needs a bigger budget, because quite frankly, there's about a million folks in New York City that live with disabilities of all sort of, you know, across the spectrum. And so, when it comes to older adults and your coordination, and this goes for both DOF as well as DIFTA, just wondering what your relationship and coordination also looks like with MOPED? Because I'm just wondering, I'm just trying to understand where the information is being shared across different city agencies, and maybe perhaps where it's not being shared, and how we can disseminate that information to as many people as possible? Because the folks that you have at DIFTA may not overlap necessarily with MOPED, and maybe there's a benefit of sharing resources there in terms of what services are available. And so, just wondering, for the purposes of the SCRI/DRI applications, as well as for the purposes of anything related to housing improvements, just wanted to know, has there been any coordination or conversation or dialogue also with MOPED at all?
Through our Cabinet for Older New Yorkers, we are looking at home modifications that support older adults aging in place, as well as issues around micro-mobility and making our streets and communities... and making our streets and communities as accessible and friendly to older adults as possible. Again, you know, defer to those agencies on the particulars in their purview. And of course, in the social service space, anyone can call Aging Connect and and we're happy to, you know, help them on a case-specific issues.
Okay. And are they or is is MOPED part of that Cabinet for Older New Yorkers?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, great. And for Department of Finance, I don't know what it what it looks like in terms of your coordination at all in terms of data sharing or anything with the disabilities community. But that'd be great to see if, you know, if you could speak to that, that'd be great. I think you need to turn your mic on.
Sorry. We've worked with MOPED in the past and are willing to work with them. Have we done outreach with?
Yeah, so we, of course, we're always looking to expand with all the other, any partner agencies. But yeah, actually, we were just having this conversation last week about exploring more with the Mayor's Office of People with Disabilities. Because I've I've had conversations with them recently enough. But definitely to expand that more and more.
Okay.
To promote outreach specifically to SCRI and DRI.
Okay, yeah, no, because I feel like there's a lot of these great city agencies that were, you know, started, but they're being underutilized. And I know that MOPED also has a very small staff and budget, which we're trying to change on the other end of things. But I think that would be highly beneficial if there could be some coordination there because Commissioner Curry is amazing and has a ton of institutional knowledge and resources and could be very helpful there, I think. So just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, council member. I'll go to Councilwoman Marte next.
First, first of all, I want to say thank you for doing the outreach program with me at Neckerbacher Village. I think the seniors really appreciate it and looking forward to do more, maybe Gubernare Gardens next time. But I thought that was a well-received event. My question is in regards to legislation that was passed earlier this year for former Mitchell Lamas. I wanted to know that that legislation increased SCRI entry to IPN in Tribeca, Independence Plaza, and also Gateway in Battery Park City, both former Mitchell Lamas. How many people have applied so far? And have those applications been processed? Or is there anything holding them up? Because I think this kind of works in correlation with in parallel with these legislation as more Mitchell Lama programs decide to privatize. Is making sure that once they do, we can continue to protect them as well.
Good morning, council member. We have to take a look at the data. We haven't communicated the data, and we can certainly get back to you with that.
Great, thank you.
Is that all? Okay. How many people do you expect to enroll in SCRI this coming year?
Yeah, we we don't have a number offhand. We can look into that and get back to you on that.
Okay, that would be great. And how many people are currently enrolled in SCRI?
It's about 59,000.
And how many people are enrolled in the SCRI program who reside in rent-controlled, rent-regulated, and stabilized units?
I mean, for SCRI, you have to be in one of those two. We can give you a breakdown. I don't have the breakdown today, but we can certainly give you a breakdown.
Okay, thank you. How much does the city pay annually in tax abatements for the SCRI program?
We have to get back to you on that data.
And do you know the administrative costs of running the SCRI program?
No, we do not. That's a that's a budgetary question, but we can certainly get back to you with that.
I'm going to assume you don't know the administrative costs then of running the DRI program.
Sorry?
The the same question for DRI. You do not have that, right?
Sure, no. We'll get that back to you.
Is there currently a backlog in processing DOF-administered SCRI entry applications?
No, there's not a backlog.
And how long does it take to approve an application on average?
Generally, about five to 10 days. Assuming we have all of the information together.
What's the process for outreach if you don't have all the information from the applicant?
Well, we send them notices to provide additional information for us.
Via mail, email, phone call?
Primarily by mail.
Okay.
And if but if they've replied electronically, we can communicate with them electronically as well.
Do you think the mayor's recently announced 5% cuts across city agencies will impact the processing of SCRI applications and renewals?
Well, again, that's a budgetary question. We certainly are, you know, have a very robust team that works with what we're given. You know, the city will do what they need to do budgetary-wise. However, at this point, you know, there'll be an effect, but we can't really measure that effect. Our team is working diligently to ensure that all of the constituents and applicants' needs are met.
But there will be an effect.
Yeah, can't really say at this time.
Okay, what are the common, the most common kinds of errors committed by SCRI applicants during the application process?
Errors?
Yeah. So when you when you have to reach out to folks by mail to say that you've received an incomplete application, for example, what are the most common errors? Like the the information that's most likely or most often left out?
Generally, either income information or rent information, lease information.
And then what steps has the administration taken to educate eligible individuals on how to correctly fill out application forms? Is that part of the outreach programs?
It's part of the outreach, but we also have a robust center where we we have applicants come in and we're able to sit in the system with their application in our walk-in centers. So we do accommodate questions and any issues that they may have in our walk-in centers.
Okay. Do you know how many Mitchell Lama residents are enrolled in SCRI?
No, we do not. That's an HPD.
Okay. And does the administration have any projections for how key DIFTA contractors, like those providing home-delivered meals, older adult centers, et cetera, will be impacted by the announced November Plan mid-year adjustment?
Echoing my colleague, that's a budget-specific question.
But it is your agencies that have to, you know, perform with the given budgets. So I would expect to have some sense of at least how you might be impacted with the with the proposed cuts. But I know you have to say what you have to say.
We're working with OMB in order to make sure that service continuity for older adults is supported. And we at New York City Aging are committed to ensuring that our clients receive the meals they need to remain healthy and safe at home. We're committed to being good stewards of the public dollar. And I'm sure that this will be addressed more fully in budget-specific conversations.
Okay. I mean, I would I would just note that NYC Aging has one of the smallest budgets of any city agency. And, you know, I'm not questioning whether or not you all will be good stewards. I'm really more so questioning whether it's appropriate to cut such a small agency budget to to make sure that you can do the work that you all do, so.
Thank you.
Can you confirm, though, that no older adult will lose services as a result of the November Plan?
This is something that we're working through with OMB.
Okay. And then regarding your recent concept paper on home-delivered meals, it indicates that they're asking providers to begin to cover weekend and holiday meals to some extent. Will the administration add additional funding into the program to support this initiative?
So the concept paper provides an opportunity for the community, including the providers, to be able to comment and provide feedback, which we'll review and, you know, will be addressed through through the release of the RFP.
So you're not aware of any additional funding at this pro for this program at this time?
This is something we're continuing to work through and certainly welcome and invite, as always, robust feedback on the concept paper to inform the release of the RFP.
So how would NYC Aging? How do you believe providers can identify funding for these added responsibilities if they were to come to fruition?
Each budget is is unique to the particulars of that community and program. And again, we welcome feedback. And, you know, certainly, there are there are different ways to address that, you know, including other partnerships.
Okay. What's the current need, the current level of need for older adult accessible housing in New York City?
We work with our partners at HPD to to obtain that specific information.
Okay. Does NYC Aging track the number of older adults that live in each naturally occurring retirement community or NORC?
We we have numbers through our NORC system that we can provide. I don't I don't have them in front of me.
Okay. What about older adults living in NYCHA housing?
NYCHA would have that information. We would certainly know of NYCHA members that are active with with one of our programs. But but NYCHA could speak more holistically.
Yeah, but of the senior housing within the NYCHA portfolio, you all don't have that information or those numbers, or you or you don't engage with that data at all?
If it's in NYCHA NORC, otherwise, we would defer specifically to to NYCHA for those numbers.
It seems like that would be a natural sort of place for outreach, even just for, you know, OACs, for home-delivered meals, for NYC Aging to be reaching over to NYCHA to ask for some of that information.
Yes, absolutely. And we work very closely with NYCHA. And we work very, you know, closely in the NYCHA communities to do outreach and engage with older adults.
Okay. I I assume this is probably more of an HPD question, but I'm going to ask it anyway, and then you can just tell me. Where are the data gaps in understanding how many older adults are living in apartment buildings throughout the city? And what steps could be taken to better understand how many older adults need retrofitted apartments?
As you implied quite clearly in your question, I would certainly defer to HPD for for that data.
Okay. Do you refer older adults who need retrofitted apartments, who've made you all aware through, you know, any of your programs or or services?
Yeah, so, you know, every every client's story and situation is unique. As as we talked about a little bit earlier with Member Schulman, we have a home modification program that, you know, depending on the particulars of the client need and situation, that would be a consideration. Another consideration is, you know, working with HPD and others. Again, it would depend on the particulars of the situation. But our role in the social service space is to be responsive to the unique needs of the clients. And and responsiveness might be direct service provision through us or one of our community-based providers, or it might include partnering with other city agencies like HPD.
Great, thank you. I'll now turn it over to Councilmember Mealy for a question.
Hello, I concur with my colleague. HPD should be here. At one other hearings, you said that your your department referred people to like our seniors to holistic programming. Could you elaborate on that? Because if they are isolated, I just want to know, you said your department send them to services.
So we have a lot of different services. It really depends on the particulars of the client situation. So you're so you're zooming in on social isolation. So the most notable thing that we do to address social isolation is we have over 300 older adult centers located throughout the city, which give people, again, an opportunity to get food, connect with their neighbors, access health promotion services, healthy nutrition, exercise, opportunities to be artistically engaged, to be mentally engaged, to be socially engaged. And then I think to to your question, it also provides a linkage to case assistance, right? So you could get to know that older adult and what they need, which might include a linkage to friendly visiting and might include a referral to our geriatric mental health program. And then, you know, conversely, again, not walking through.
How many people will go to the geriatric health program?
Mental health.
Mental.
We could get back to you with that data. And just broadly, I'll say we have geriatric mental health in 88 older adult centers throughout the city. We know as as a city, and particularly with older adults, mental health is is often heavily stigmatized. So we do a lot to support soft engagement at the centers, identify people with more complex issues, meaning anxiety, depression, social isolation, who might be interested and and benefit through mental health services.
I have a question in regards to having an application streamline process. Is there any, I don't know if this is connected. If someone is on Social Security, should you not already know that how much their stipend is really and will know that they are eligible for SCRI or DRI? I I don't know if it's, I'm just trying to find out. If someone is on Social Security, would it be on the application, you should know their process already? If they put in an application for SCRI or DRI, shouldn't you know whether they need fu extra funding or not? I'm just trying to see how can we step, you know, streamline the application process? If you already know they are on Social Security, should you not have their all their information? How much they're making yearly?
If that's the only source of income that they have, then that's what then that's what we'll use in order to determine.
Would that be able to streamline the application process for them, that they don't have to keep doing it every year? Because during, even during the pandemic, a lot of offices was closed. Our seniors still needed to fill out these applications. Or some of these landlords was throwing them out in the street. And I must say, I was one of them that helped them through this process. So I'm just asking, if you already know their annual salary, shouldn't it be a way that whenever they plug in electronically or given their application, it should be automatic every year? That sometimes seniors, well, young adults may start becoming forgetful maybe next year? And if this process is already in the making and you know their salary have not changed, shouldn't it been, should it be easier for them to just reapply with their name electronically? And it's done instead of maybe falling through the cracks because they don't know how to get online again? Or maybe their caretaker is not there now that was there last year?
We have a process of short-form renewals for those who have already been in the program for for several years. And once they've been in the program for a certain number of years, they don't have to keep producing income or validating their income to us. So that helps to streamline the process somewhat with them. If you're asking whether or not we have an automatic renewal for these folks, we do not. The law doesn't provide for that.
And why? This is a population that may need extra help. They're not as young as you are. But we will become their age. And the better way to help our aging population is to make it easier and simple for them. So. So, why is not reoccurring? May I ask?
Well, while that's not currently the process, we're certainly endeavoring to make sure that we try to streamline and make this process as easy as we can.
And that's also part of the legislation that we're hearing.
If I may, Councilmember.
Yes, I need to hear a little bit more.
According to state law, we are required to, there is a requirement for annual renewal, so it will require legislative change. During COVID, we would like to know that there was, in accordance with the emergency declaration, there were automatic renewals, but since that's been lifted, again, according to state law, there is mandatory annual renewal. Or, well, annual for DRI and then biannual for SCRI, or it's in accordance with your lease terms.
Can I?
Thank you.
Chair Hudson, you had asked a question about the enrollment numbers for SCRI and DRI.
Yes.
So, the total numbers that we have in our program are 59,900, and that's broken down to about 49,000 for SCRI and 10,800 for DRI, and out of that population in DRI, we have about 762 Mitchell Lama DRI recipients. The other thing that I'd like to add.
But, sorry, one quick second.
Sure.
You said 59,900 total.
Total, correct.
49,000 SCRI.
Correct.
10,800 DRI. If I'm not mistaken, are we missing 100?
Yeah.
That's 59,800, and you gave me 59,900.
49,100.
Oh, 49,100, okay. Thank you. Okay, sorry, you were saying?
About 762.
Mitchell Lama.
People who are in DRI Mitchell Lamas.
Okay.
The other thing that we just wanted to mention briefly is that we worked very hard with the state to sort of level-set the income definition and what's required for income, and so now, the program requires one to submit, if they file their taxes, the adjusted gross income from their taxes, which reduces the requirement for additional paperwork. We estimate that about 7,300 additional renters may qualify eventually.
Sorry, what was that number?
Once we fully implement the law and the agency is able to socialize the impact of this new law, but the work is not yet done, we must now implement this income definition at the local level by amending the city administrative code, and look forward to working with you and your team to be able to enable that.
Absolutely, and thank you. I had one follow-up question from Councilmember Mealy. You mentioned that the short-form renewals are available once someone has been in the program for a number of years. What is the number of years?
Five consecutive years.
Five consecutive years, okay. Thank you. I think that's it for our questions. We do have two people here to testify in person. I know usually you all disperse, but it is only two people, and so I would ask that if you're able to stick around for another couple of minutes, then we would greatly appreciate that. It's three minutes per testimony, so I'm only asking you to stay for six minutes.
Of course, of course.
Thank you, all right.
Thank you very much to the administration, we appreciate it. We're going to be moving on to, as the chair said, public testimony. As a reminder, for public testimony, you can submit written testimony for the record up to 72 hours after the conclusion of this hearing, and the email address for that is We will be hearing from in-person folks first, and then we will be moving to virtual panelists, and at this time, I'll ask the members of the administration, reps from the administration to leave the tables here, so that folks who signed up from the public can testify. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, before I call up our in-person panelists, just to note that each person testifying will have three minutes to testify, and we do encourage you to submit written testimony as well. It is all considered by the committee and is greatly appreciated. This time, I will be calling Kim Lerner and Stephanie Taylor, please. If you're in the room and wishing to testify and your name was not called, please fill out an appearance card. You can go to the Sergeant-at-Arms and fill out an appearance card. Thank you. Good morning. We will start with Kim Lerner, and then we will hear from Stephanie Taylor.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Hudson, and members of the Committee on Aging for hosting this important hearing and for the legislation that is being heard today. My name is Kim Lerner, and I'm the Director of Live on New York's Benefits Outreach Program, which provides assistance to older adults in applying for most of the benefits that they are eligible for in New York City, including SCRI. Live on New York's members include more than 110 community-based nonprofits that provide core services which allow all New Yorkers to thrive in our communities as we age, such as older adult centers, home-delivered meals, affordable senior housing, NORCs, and home care. Live on New York is also home to the Reframing Aging NYC Initiative, part of the National Reframing Aging Initiative aimed to counteract ageism and improve the way policymakers, stakeholders, and the public think about aging and older people. With our members and you, we work to make New York City a better place to age. SCRI is one of the most effective programs in keeping older adults in their homes and their communities, but it is a benefit that only an estimated 55% of eligible New Yorkers are utilizing. Within that 55%, many New Yorkers only apply for SCRI when they are faced with eviction or their rent burden has become too high, often many years after they were eligible. Early enrollment in SCRI is key to ensuring older New Yorkers stay in their homes in the long term. SCRI benefits are calculated by the date applicants apply, not based on when they become eligible. This means that if an applicant is applying because of dire financial straits, SCRI will not change their financial circumstances. It will only freeze them in that state. They must apply as close to their eligibility as possible to ensure long-term housing and financial stability. One of our clients, an 86-year-old woman named Marie perfectly illustrates this situation. Marie was referred to us for a benefits screening and was found to be eligible for a number of benefits, including SCRI, which of course was great news. However, she told us that she and her husband had lived in this apartment together until he died over 26 years ago. At the time of his death, her rent was $1,200 a month. It is now almost $1,900 a month. Marie actually became eligible for SCRI 24 years ago, when she turned 62. If she had known about SCRI then, her rent would now be frozen at $1,200 a month. Many New Yorkers do not apply for SCRI because they do not know about them, or they do not know that they are eligible. Based on these factors, we would offer the following recommendations: pass Intro 985 and expand these efforts to all eligible New Yorkers that we have the ability to reach. This bill would increase awareness and remove barriers in Mitchell Lama housing in one action. Create a universal benefit screening tool that informs applicants of all benefits they qualify for. Work with the state to pass S569A2974, a SCRI rollback that would make the benefit retroactive to the date the applicant became eligible for the benefit, and cap it at 30% of their income. The city should pass a resolution in support of this policy and work with HPD and DOF to understand what would need to be done to implement it as efficiently as possible upon passage of those bills. We also would like you to consider requiring the landlords to provide information about SCRI and DRI when offering a lease renewal. Furthermore, Live on New York strongly supports the passage of all the bills heard in today's hearing and is grateful for the leadership of Chair Hudson on aging issues in our community. We are grateful for the work of Councilmembers Dinowitz and Schulman, and of course, for everyone who serves on the Aging Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Stephanie Taylor?
Good morning. Thank you to Chair Hudson and the Committee on Aging for the opportunity to testify. My name is Stephanie Taylor, and I'm a Project Director at Volunteers of Legal Service, also known as VALS. My pronouns are she and her. VALS was established in 1984, and our purpose is to leverage private attorneys to provide free legal services to low-income New Yorkers to help fill the justice gap. I oversee both our benefits law project and our incarcerated mothers' law project. For over three decades, VALS has assisted New York City older adults with high-quality free legal services through our dedicated staff and our network of pro bono attorneys. Just the past year, we worked on over 2,000 cases for older adults living in New York City. We provide legal assistance on a wide range of civil legal issues, including end-of-life and incapacity planning, landlord-tenant matters, access to benefits, consumer matters, and other civil legal needs. We work closely with dozens of community-based organizations, working with older adults, many of the city's older adult centers, and naturally occurring retirement communities, NORCs. As part of our benefits law project, we help older adults with their senior citizen rent-increase-exemption SCRI applications, and we conduct legal workshops to educate the public about these life-saving benefits. Most older adults live on fixed incomes, and the ability to freeze their shelter costs can often mean the difference between being able to age in place in the community with dignity or being at risk of experiencing homelessness. Over the past few months, we've conducted several SCRI legal clinics, including at Mitchell Lama Buildings. At some of these events, we've worked alongside New York City's Department of Finance and Department of Housing Preservation and Development, HPD. Through all of this work, we've spoken with many older adults about the SCRI application and the recertification process. As such, we are well-positioned to weigh in on Introduction 985 as it pertains to this vulnerable population. We have found that many older adults are confused by the SCRI application and recertification process. They have questions on eligibility, requisite documentation, their pending applications, and of course, application denials. Some of these older adults report to us that their applications haven't been processed in one or two years. These individuals don't know whether their application or documentation was incomplete, or whether there is any way to cure their deficient application. Many low-income older adults living in Mitchell Lama housing are unaware that they are eligible for SCRI and do not know where or how to apply for benefits. We have teamed up with social services staff who work tirelessly to help as many older adults as possible apply for SCRI benefits, but inevitably, there are many who are left behind. Providing eligible residents with pre-filled applications could ensure that more older adults will be able to access SCRI benefits. VALS recognizes New York City's efforts to better assist older adults with their SCRI applications, but there is much that can be done to increase access to SCRI benefits and to make the application process easier. The provisions contained in Introduction 985 would have a positive impact on ensuring that more older adults are aware of the program and will help with the ease of filling out the application. Providing pre-populated SCRI applications to eligible residents would certainly help many older adults ultimately obtain these critical benefits. We would be happy to work with the council members' offices and the Department of Finance and HPD to help screen people and to help them with their applications. Our city's older adults' lifetime experiences and achievements are woven into the fabric of our city. We should strive to provide them with all the support they need to remain in their communities, stay socially connected, and to remain active and healthy as they age. Thank you for allowing us to submit this testimony and for supporting the needs of New York City's older adults.
Thank you both for your testimony, and thank you to the administration for sticking around. I do think it's valuable for you all to be able to hear these testimonies, so thank you.
I just wanted to ask, do you go out to the community? Because on some Sundays, I have a VAGI board meetings where a great big population of seniors come to my office. We do free lawyers on Tuesday, pantry on Wednesday, two free immigration lawyers in my office. So, I would love if you could come to our office to make sure that our community know that these programs exist, and we try to do it, but if we don't have the people right there to show them, and my office does it also, but having you as a partner would be great. So, I'm looking forward to working with you. And it's sad that only time our constituents find out about SCRI is when they're about to get evicted. So, that's something we have to really put in place as soon as possible. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you so much to this in-person panel, we appreciate it. At this point, if there's anyone in the room who wishes to testify but has not done so, please fill out an appearance card with the Sergeant-at-Arms. Seeing none, we will move on to our virtual panelists. I'm going to call the names. Please wait for the Sergeant-at-Arms to call time before you begin your testimony. We're going to hear first from Joshua Bentley.
You may begin when you're ready.
Joshua Bentley is not present, so we will move on to Sabine Ovide. Sabine is not present. At this time, if there is anyone on Zoom who has not had their name called but would like to testify, please indicate so using the Zoom raise hand function. Seeing no hands, turning it back to the chair for closing remarks.
Thank you so much. Thanks again to the administration, specifically to Department of Finance and NYC Aging for their testimonies today. Thank you to my colleagues, Councilmembers Schulman and Dinowitz, for their pieces of legislation that will certainly help make aging in place here in New York City a lot easier, and thanks to everyone for their testimony and my colleagues for their questions. I now call this hearing adjourned.